Jeannie, you're on.
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Jacob, President of the Seminary Ridge Civic Association. We are waiting for all of the attendees to be entered into tonight's forum, so please bear with us for a minute or two as they enter. Again, good evening. We will wait another minute or so for all of the residents who registered for the forum to be admitted. Thank you very much for your patience and we will begin shortly. Okay, we're going to begin. Good evening again. I'm Jeannie Jacob, President of the Seminary Ridge Civic Association. And welcome tonight to our first forum of a series of four. We're pleased to have you with us this evening and hope you will join us for the other three forums in May. The first three forums are for candidates running for Alexandria City Council and the fourth forum is for the mayoral candidates. Thirteen of the fifteen candidates for city council will be running in the Democrat primary on June 8th. One of the other two candidates is an independent and the final one is a Republican. Early voting has already begun and the June 8th primary is open to all registered voters in Alexandria. We hope these four forums will make you a more informed voter. I want to thank SRCA Board Member Joe Sestak for organizing the four forums and for contacting all seventeen candidates participating in them. Also, I thank the Board's Communications Chair Susan Clark Sestak and all of the SRCA block captains for promoting this series throughout the Seminary Ridge neighborhoods. Our man behind the scenes tonight and who will be monitoring the timing of the candidates' answers is Richie Weiblinger. He's a fairly new Seminary Ridge resident. Also, our moderator for tonight's forum is Mike Souza, a former SRCA president and current parliamentarian of the SRCA board. Mike will explain the rules for the forum, introduce the candidates and then ask them the questions submitted by many of you. Now I turn the program back to Mike Souza, who will be introducing the first five candidates running for Alexandria City Council. Mike, it's all yours.
Good evening and thank you, Jeannie. I appreciate the introduction and we look forward to a fine evening. Welcome to Candidates Forum Number One for the Alexandria City Council. My name is Michael Souza and I'm currently serving, as Jeannie said, as SRCA parliamentarian and will serve as a moderator for this evening's discussion. With us this evening are Councilman Kanek Agiri, Ms. Sarah Bagley, Mr. Kirk McPike, Mr. Patrick Moran and Ms. Aleah Gaskins, who will be is looking forward to participating with us this evening. However, she, due to another commitment, she will be joining us a little bit later. My goal is to be as invisible as possible and allow the candidates to make their case directly to the residents of Seminary Ridge as to why they deserve our votes. This is not a debate, but a direct and question and answer period with the candidates. The questions have been submitted in advance by Seminary Ridge residents and I have determined which questions are most directly relevant to the concerns of Seminary Ridge. As Jeannie has indicated, in order to keep these forums to a tolerable timeframe, we have broken up the city council field into three nights and the mayoral candidates to a separate evening. Please plan on joining us for all four events so that you hear from everybody. The rules are simple. Each candidate will make an opening comment no longer than five minutes highlighting the following: Who you are, including how long you've lived in Alexandria, your background and experience, and any relevant personal information you wish to include. Number two, why you are running for council and why you believe you are qualified to represent the citizens of the city. Number three, what are the goals and objectives that you wish to focus on if elected? And four, end with what you think is the most important issue facing the city today. I will then ask each candidate in one minute submitted questions. For both the five-minute statement and the one-minute submitted questions, Richie Weiblinger, our timekeeper for the evening, will hold up a yellow card at thirty seconds and a red card at ten seconds. After both the five-minute statement and the one-minute answer, you will be muted unless at my discretion, I wish to follow and answering, I wish to ask a follow-up question to ensure you have directly answered the question. Follow-up questions will be kept to a minimum to ensure that we allow equal time to all candidates, maintain the schedule and squeeze in as many questions that we can in the allotted time. I intend to rotate the questions through all the candidates to ensure everyone has a chance to answer the first and last. I will begin alphabetically and the person who answers the question first will go to the end of the queue for the next question and the candidate who answered second will move up and answer the next question first. When Ms. Gaskins joins the forum, she will be allowed to answer the current question, but will not be able to provide an opening statement due to time constraints. I'm excited to hear everything that you have to say this evening and all the great ideas on how you intend to help Alexandria and Seminary Ridge continue to be the type of city that we are proud to call home. With that, let's start with the first five-minute introduction to you, Councilman Agiri.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to everyone for being here tonight. Thank you to the Seminary Ridge Civic Association for putting this together. It's always good to be able to have a chance to be able to talk a little bit about ourselves and engage with our citizens. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Kanek Agiri. I'm in my first time on council and running for reelection. I'm originally from Los Angeles, born and raised. Both my parents are from here from Mexico and I attended UNC Chapel Hill. Go Hills! After graduation, I was excited to finally get back to LA, but I guess fate didn't have it in the cards for me because unfortunately we became another statistics in the housing crisis in 2008. You know, dejected, I went back to North Carolina seeing if I could try things out again over there. What I found was basically four jobs, working eighty hours a week, seven days a week. So it wasn't, it was a hard but valuable experience that I learned in those two years. But opportunity was brewing and so if you fast forward to 2011, I dropped anchor here in the Port City. And we started off living in the Delray neighborhood in Auburn Village, which was a little over a mile away from my first gig, which was working in Alexander City Public Schools as a parent liaison at GW Middle School. And then I was promoted because of the good work that I was doing there to help start a division-wide family and community engagement center or the FACE Center. So during my three years in ACPS, I really got a good opportunity to see the variety of neighborhoods that we have within the city and really get a good, a good feeling for where I was living, right? And at the same time, I was also able to create really great relationships with groups like Tenants and Workers, Community Lodgings, Casa Chulalaw, and Urban Health and other city agencies that I was interacting with. That would be really important come 2020, but I'll get to that in a second. So currently, right now, in my day job, I work in Medicaid specifically. And one of the things that I'm really proud of is that my entire time here in Alexandria, I've been able to serve our residents, whether it was families in the school system or my current position in Medicaid, helping some of the most vulnerable and hard-to-reach individuals in the region. So I've always been really proud of my dedicated service here in Alexandria and now to the region. Knowing the deep pockets of inequity in our city from my time working in ACPS, advocating for housing and immigrant rights with boards and commissions that I served on, such as the EOC where I was the chair after my friend over here, Mr. McPike, and working in public health circles, I knew more needed to be done and that was part of the impetus for my run in 2018. I was humbled and honored to be elected by you, the Alexandrians, as the first ever Latino to serve on council. And when I came in, I hit the ground running. I was tapped by the mayor to lead our census efforts as the chair of our 2020 Complete Count Committee. This is where my years of relationship building with different community groups really paid off. Even though we faced an unprecedented hurdles during the census, an administration bent on undermining the process and a global pandemic, I was still successful, able to successfully lead efforts to achieve a 100% count of our households. Those efforts have secured millions of dollars in federal funding. One more time, millions of dollars in federal funding for the next decade for our roads, our schools, our businesses and our families. When COVID-19 hit, I took that same on-the-ground approach and jumped right into the fray. I visited all our food distribution sites, both through the schools and community partners, and got safety protocols implemented because I didn't want our food distribution sites to become virus distribution sites, right? We have to protect some of our vulnerable community members. I tasked staff with creating several informational guides to help meet specific needs such as what do you do if you don't have insurance? Where to find free or low-cost COVID-19 testing? I met virtually with our rental assistance groups and residents who were facing eviction to get a better understanding of what everybody was facing, both from a tenant perspective as well as our safety net providers, right? What needs did they have? What were they seeing to make sure that council really had a good idea of what was happening? I also knew language access was going to be a huge issue and made multilingual resources and outreach a priority in the city. When you see those signs at testing sites or vaccination pods, those are because of me. If you happen to use one of those handwashing stations that were across the city over the summer last year, those were also because of me. As a Medical Reserve Corps volunteer for over five years, I've been on the front lines volunteering at our COVID-19 call center, at food distributions, testing sites, and now, of course, at vaccination pods. Although I will admit, I haven't been there lately because of the campaign, but as soon as the campaign's over, I'm looking forward to jumping back in there. But essentially, I've been fighting for equity and transparency throughout this pandemic, making sure that our limited resources were placed where they were needed most. At the onset of the pandemic closures, Visit Alexandria had a really great interactive map, but the focus was almost exclusively on Delray and Old Town businesses. I changed that and made sure our businesses in Orlando and the West End got the attention they deserved. And when money finally came in to support our small businesses, I helped ensure over $200,000 of back-to-business grants went to small women and minority-owned businesses across the city.
Thank you, Councilman Agiri. Next is Ms. Sarah Bagley.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for organizing this forum and giving us a chance to introduce ourselves to you and take your questions. My name is Sarah Bagley. I am a first-time candidate for council and I am, I'm running because I believe I have both a personal and a professional background that uniquely prepares me to take on this challenge. I'm originally from Virginia Beach, Virginia. I was born in the Naval Hospital down there. My father was, served in the Marines and then worked in the Naval Shipyard for my entire childhood. My brother now works in the same shipyard as a nuclear engineer. I was in elementary school when I watched my mom graduate from Old Dominion University and the two of them established early in me the importance of service and education and that has held true throughout my education and professional career. After graduating high school down in Virginia Beach, I went to the College of William and Mary and then I came up here for law school at the Catholic University of America in DC. I spent about seventeen years total living in DC. I practiced law after clerking and I was a trial attorney doing primarily civil defense litigation work. Shortly after making partner, I made a fairly dramatic and life-changing decision to leave the active practice of law, though I'm still licensed attorney, and pursue work for an affordable housing nonprofit. I had worked on a few cases that involved housing and it became clear to me how having a safe, sanitary and well-maintained place to live is vital to everything else in the household's existence. You simply cannot pursue your personal goals, improve your health, complete your education, send your children to school, access the community at large without a safe base from which to start. So six years ago, I began working for my current organization where my job is to build social service programs for a low-income housing community. In that work, I have had to learn how best to communicate with people in the way that best suits them. Oftentimes, you have to be conscious of language, you have to be conscious of technology challenges and you have to be conscious of people having very different schedules and best times of day and best methods of communication. And so I'm very proud of the work that I have done, especially as a landlord during the pandemic, both to handle food insecurity, to provide PPE and to make sure that we were maintaining, you know, homes and keeping people in their homes during the pandemic. After moving to Alexandria five years ago, I quickly became involved. I got to know this city on the ground by knocking doors as part of the Alexandria Democrats and because of my belief generally in civic engagement. I have knocked thousands of doors in the city and listened to so many of you talk about the issues you're passionate about. I helped develop a Postcards to Voters program, which last year mailed hundreds of thousands of postcards around the Commonwealth in the country to encourage people to get involved. Finally, I joined Moms Demand Action, a gun violence prevention organization, and for two years I was the event lead for that organization, lobbying both here in city council, in Richmond and on Capitol Hill for issues that I'm passionate about, making our communities safer. I entered this race for city council for several reasons. One, I believe greatly in diversity on the council and with two women leaving the present council, I wanted to be sure we had women on the ballot. We have thirteen candidates in this race, but only four women. So I'm proud to be here and to represent the great tradition of women serving Alexandria on city council. I believe that my legal training and my negotiation skills and my ability to parse through complex legal matters, along with my six years of civic engagement and work in low-income housing communities, prepares me to do the work of synthesizing difficult problems, communicating with our residents and incorporating solutions that serve everybody. Those have to address our most pressing problems, infrastructure being among them. And that's a big word, right? But for us here in Alexandria, it means addressing our schools, addressing our storm and stormwater and sewage capacity issues and addressing our broadband and street safety issues. And so I think we need to focus on those, take advantage of the American Rescue Plan funds coming our way and really use this opportunity emerging from the pandemic to share in the incredible wealth and opportunity and location that Alexandria has. We are a special place. We will always be eight miles from the city. We will always be full of history. People will always want to live here. And so let's maximize that. Let's really fund those institutions that ensure we have a high quality of life. Let's expand those opportunities and make sure that Visit Alexandria and the Alexandria Economic Development Program are reaching out beyond Old Town, beyond Delray, into our West End community and those businesses and lifting up everybody together as we emerge from the pandemic. I thank you for giving me your time tonight and I ask you to consider me on June 8th and look for more at sarahforcitycouncil.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up is Mr. Kirk McPike.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm Kirk McPike and I'm running in the Democratic primary for Alexandria City Council because I love Alexandria and I believe that Alexandria's future can be even brighter than its present. But to achieve a brighter future, we have to make sure that we reach, meet the test of the challenges that lie directly before us in these difficult times. I first, I grew up in Texas. I first came to Alexandria about ten years ago to run Adam Evans' campaign for the Virginia Senate and I immediately fell in love with the city. Its beautiful neighborhoods, incredible restaurants, historic, you know, locations and the amazing waterfront. And I knew that this is where I wanted to spend the rest of my life. And my husband and I today live in Seminary Hill, very near Alexandria Hospital. And we voted Temple Beth El, which is where he is the cantor. And in my day job, I am chief of staff to a member of the United States Congress from California. And in my job, I help my congressman listen to the needs of his constituents, take advice from policy experts who have deep knowledge of the policy questions we're facing and use those sources of input to help him craft policy solutions to help our residents address some of the challenges in their life. And I hope to take that legislating skill and put it to use for you on the city council if I have the honor of being elected. When I came to Alexandria ten years ago, I knew that I wanted to stay here and I immediately got involved in the civic life of the city. I became a member of the Economic Opportunities Commission, which is a city commission that deals with a number of issues, including food insecurity, homelessness and housing affordability. But as we all know, in Alexandria, it's really hard to get past that housing affordability question. The first time I ever spoke before city council was in support of replacing the old decrepit Ramsey Homes building with the brand-new lineage building that just opened in Old Town. A significant improvement not only in quality, but quantity of affordable units on that parcel of land. It's a great, I think, example of how Alexandria can put our progressive values to work to address a difficult challenge. After serving as chair of the Economic Opportunities Commission, I moved over to the Budget Advisory Committee, which I can tell you has been an interesting place to be for the last year or so. Last year, we were very excited. Revenues were growing faster than expenses for the first time since the Great Recession. And then the virus hit and Alexandria could have stumbled, but I think instead we rallied. We rallied by our businesses, our schools rallied to make sure that our students had access not only to educational materials, but to nutrition programs. We rallied and helped each other and our neighbors. And now we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel of the virus. But even when the virus itself is in the past, the next council has to be ready to help the city fully recover from the effects of this difficult year. And I believe that my time working on city commissions and my legislative skills from Capitol Hill will enable me to hit the ground running on day one to help the city do exactly that. We have resources coming down from the federal government and the American Rescue Plan. My friends and I on Capitol Hill are working very hard to help the president pass his jobs plan, which will make even more money available to our city. So I hope that we can use our recovery from the pandemic as a way to tackle some of our longest-term problems, the flooding that impacts so many families in our city. So that our neighbors, when they see a storm on the horizon, they just think it'll be a nuisance. They won't worry that they're about to lose the most valuable investment of their life. The affordable housing challenges that face our city so that parents don't have to worry that they're going to have to take their kids out of the only school they've ever known because the next rent increase is going to be the one that pushes them out of their house. The traffic and broadband issues that we have in this city, we have a great equity issue with broadband access in Alexandria. And I believe that we can build out the municipal fiber network the city is putting in place, run it into our underserved neighborhoods, allow ISP services to be offered over it and make a real difference in terms of internet access for people in our city. This isn't just about being able to stream Netflix. It's about being able to do your job in times of pandemic. It's about being able to do schoolwork when you can't be in the classroom. It's about being able to sign up for vaccination slots. It's incredibly important and I'll make it a priority if I'm elected to council. And so I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you here tonight. I've been talking to thousands of people across the city. Over the course of this campaign, I've knocked on more than 2,500 doors and heard from people directly, the things that matter most to them. So I'm looking forward to hearing what matters most to you and I hope that I can earn your support and earn your vote. I have the endorsement of Senator Adam Evans, of the Nova Labor Federation, the Sierra Club, Alexandria's Firefighters and the Victory Fund because I would be restoring LGBTQ representation to the city council, but I really want to earn your support. So please visit my website, KirkMcPike.com. I look forward to answering your questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McPike. Next, and the last opening statement is Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, everybody with Seminary Ridge for not only coordinating this, but also taking the time this evening to learn about some of their potential future leaders of our great city. My name is Patrick Moran and I am running because I want to help home. I'm from here. I was born here and on Seminary Road, in the Nova Hospital there and grew up playing on Seminary Road in Jordan and going with my dad around. He represented Alexandria in Northern Virginia for about twenty-five years. And part of that, he was on city council and served as mayor. Basically, I grew up understanding the importance of service. Privilege, no doubt, but also how hard work and service are absolutely critical to being a part of a strong community. That's something that is core to who I am. It's core to how I look at issues. It's core to how I look at problems, frankly, that we're facing as a city and trying to identify solutions. I, after finishing up school, my parents split. I went down to Southern Maryland and finished up high school there before I went to Cora Kelly and GW. And then I ended up getting recruited to play football at Yale University. So I joked that I got a major in political science and then a dual major in football because that was basically the full-time job that we had to maintain throughout the course of that. But my core study was a focus on government and the societal impacts of climate change. And, you know, at the time, science wasn't where it was now. And there was a lot less acknowledging, it was kind of more just the scientists and everybody else just kind of putting their hands over their ears and refusing to acknowledge it. Now, as a community, not only in Alexandria, but across the country and world, we're seeing that. We're seeing that on a number of societal issues, not to mention infrastructure. In New Haven, I set up a nonprofit. I founded it in 2013. It was called Fitizen. It was dedicated to improving community health and we did community gardens. It was what I knew how to do. I grew up gardening in West Yular Terrace off of Russell Road and doing fitness training. But meditation, which was a little bit, you know, seemingly wacky or people would look at us the wrong way, but mindfulness increasingly is something that has embraced into society, which is a really good thing. Now, I came back to Alexandria after finishing up and returning in 2013 and joined the Medical Reserve Corps. I also, just getting involved, I was, you know, after politics and doing what we could to support our community and uphold our progressive values. I got, I started plugging away and things that I thought and felt were important in that tied to passion. So that was the Medical Reserve Corps. I went on to represent the MRC and the Citizen Court Council, which is a city board and commission that's dedicated to emergency preparedness and coordinating our volunteer organizations. I was appointed chair of that organization and I'm the only board or commission chair that's actually running in this council race. I was just elected to the second term and that's been phenomenal. We've successfully pushed for the Resilient ALX Charter, which is something that we're going to increasingly be hearing a lot about, but it was designed to improve the resiliency in our city, infrastructure investments. That's what everybody's talking about now as well, but it's a resiliency aspect as well and it's going to free up a lot of funding. I look forward to the opportunity to work on behalf of that, either on council or in a continued effort as chair. Now, I'm running for, there's some personal reasons and there's also, there's also some pragmatic reasons. The reality is, is my mother, before she passed this past fall, she told me to reconsider public service. I was satisfied, frankly, in the volunteer capacity that I was serving our city. But at her request, I started watching the city council meetings and it quickly became critically apparent that we need a small business perspective and we need perspective that upholds the values of our neighborhoods, ensuring that our neighborhoods and the deep, rich character that embodies them is reflected in our city council decisions. That's something on council that I will uphold. It's something that I continually infuse in the solutions that I offer and it's the basis in which I, in which I talk about these things. I'm not just looking for buzzwords. I'm looking for solutions that are based in a long legacy of service in my family as well as exposure that I've had over many, many years. I also have a little girl. We've got a one-year-old baby girl, Mariela, and she is fabulous. I am completely obsessed with her. She is awesome. And I want to ensure that Alexandria is everything that it was for me, for her. That's an inclusive community that's strong, that exudes values as you walk the streets and that you've got neighbors, you know, that look out for you as they look out to Rome. You know, truly takes a village and that's part of what makes Alexandria great. Now, in the coming questions, we're going to have opportunities to talk specific about solutions and through the course of this campaign and our website, we dig in quite a bit, which I'm excited about and I look forward in this effort to continue my push to ensure that Alexandria is the greatest small city in the world. Good is not good enough, in my opinion. It's something that we can uphold and we've got an extremely bright future in front of us and I look forward to working with all of you to make that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. I think that was all very informative. And since the first opportunity to speak went to Councilman Agiri, then next, the first question will go to Ms. Bagley. So with that, then we'll go Ms. Bagley, Mr. McPike, Mr. Moran and then Mr. Agiri. So the first question is, the last city council ignored the thirteen Alexandria civic associations that were opposed to the road diet on Seminary Road. What do you see as a role of civic associations in the city policymaking process?
Okay, thank you. I was just glancing down to see what the time constraint is on this question. So thank you for the, for, okay. So we, civic associations have a significant role to play and I think tonight is a perfect example of that. Also, I sat in last night on the Environmental Policy Commission meeting and saw them read letters and take testimony, you know, from citizens from this very community. So I think it's necessary and it's valuable and it's the lived experiences of our residents. So we certainly need to take that in. We need to reach out where there aren't potentially associations already formed and make sure that we're connecting with communities who also have feedback to share. I think we need to heed the insights of our boards and commissions who are there to give valuable insight and experience. And I hope that, yeah, and so with regard to that, you know, that specific Um, and I I I hope that that, yeah, and and so with regard to to that, you know, that specific decision, I think we need to, if we were to revisit it, we need to do that in mind of all that feedback.
Thank you. Mr. McPike.
Yeah, no, I agree that civic associations are an excellent source of in input and insight that city councils should look to. I think that we should be making sure that obviously we participate in forums like this, that if I were elected to city council, I intend to hold town halls across the city regularly and I want to use the civic associations to invite their members to come and be a part of that. You know, work with the civic associations, make sure that we're getting members from all parts of the city uh represented on our various boards and commissions. So it's important that we're hearing from a wide range of opinions and the civic associations can be channels by which to bring that uh input into our policymaking process. You know, like, uh, part of my job, as I said, with my boss in Congress is listening to input from constituents, listening to uh input from experts, infusing that into policy suggestions. And I would be looking to civic associations as a major source of input uh as we go forward into the uh into the new council. I would note that on the Seminary Road itself, I've knocked on thousands of doors in the city, had hundreds of conversations and uh in actual positions of the people of Alexandria, just in general, are very split.
Thank you, um, Ms. Moran. Same question to you.
Mike, I appreciate that. Um, look, I, we've got a part time council. You know, not in terms of responsibilities, but in terms of pay and in terms of reality. The fact is, is that they have to maintain full time jobs to uh to be able to live in the city. That's crazy. Uh, now, I mentioned that because we need to formalize the participation of our civic associations and civic civic uh and citizen associations into our decision making process. As the city has adopted uh the planning processes, the Project Management Institute, I happen to be a PMP. Um, you know, with small area plans and otherwise, these are planning processes that the city staff is able to utilize, come together and ultimately make decisions, pursue grants, do all the types of things that ultimately created this wave of momentum that got uh the Seminary Road result the way it was. I'd like to see us set up a civic association neighborhood board that's dedicated to focus on quality of life issues. I'd like to see us provide grants to civic associations to ensure that they are inclusive and that uh and to help frankly with the uh the bookkeeping aspects of it that are critically important. I think a civic associate.
All right, um, Councilman Agiri, same question, according to civic associations.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, first of all, you know, civic associations give a lot of really great feedback and are a great source of of input. Um, and it's also a thankless job. I I want to be sure to acknowledge that because uh and Mike, you know this very well, being a past president, uh all the work that goes into it. That being said, civic associations are not the only residents in the city, right? I myself am excluded from even being a part of the civic association in this area, even though I live two blocks from Seminary Road because I'm not a homeowner or at least not a single family homeowner or a town homeowner. Um, so I just want to remind everyone that we get input and feedback from everybody in the city, right? So while I value the input from the civic associations, at times we're going to disagree. And so I I don't like the framing of it because I don't think that the civic associations were ignored. We listened, we disagreed, and that showed in our vote, which ended up being a four three vote, right? So I, that's the approach that I would take with that.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, the next question, we will open up with Mr. McPike. And kind of follows along the same lines. Um, given the often combative nature surrounding Seminary Road Diet, uh the next big transportation study and project would be the transit lanes on Duke Street. Uh, what is your opinion of the installation of dedicated bicycle lanes on this major east west thoroughfare during the phase one and two of the project between Landmark and King Street Metro? And should the city acquire private property to achieve this goal?
So bike lanes along Duke? Um, I actually am not particularly familiar uh with a specific proposal to put bike lanes on Duke Street. I apologize for that, but I do think as we look at roads, we need to be sure that we're taking into consideration as we have as our under our complete street policies. Uh, what are all the uh, you know, possible uses for the road that we could make available? But not necessarily meaning that we have to put every use on every road. Um, we need to take a look at what each individual area in the city requires, what the um needs of locals are, what the sort of throughput of traffic is on the road and make a an informed decision for whether it's bus, rapid transit lanes, bike lanes, pedestrian safety features, all those elements, um, depending upon the actual conditions of the road in question. It's going to be about listening to constituent and resident input, but also taking an expert assessment of the utilization and needs of the road itself.
All right. Thank you, um, Mr. Moran.
Yeah, it's interesting. You know, I think uh and I'll back up and and get this upstream. We have to ensure that we are learning and that our city staff and the process is is informed by frankly, the failures of communication that went along with the Seminary Road decision. Uh, we have to ensure that use is there. We have to do that in collaboration with um with our civic associations, with our citizen associations, to ensure that it's an inclusive body uh representative of not just homeowners but residents. Um, now with all that being said, we have to prepare for the growth that our city is undergoing. We caught a tiger by the tail uh with Amazon and and there is an enormous amount of investment going on in our city and increasingly with density. I want to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation and neighborhoods find themselves in a situation where cut through traffic is happening, that's uh that is uh potentially uh we are ill equipped for. I want to be proactive. I want to ensure that uh that we are arming our streets with the right infrastructure, tickets uh or cameras and otherwise to ensure that our neighborhoods and residential throughwares don't become uh speedways. Ten seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. And um I see Ms. Gaskin says join us. Thank you. Um, we will slide you in um towards the at at the next question. So uh with this question, I'll read it to you when um after uh Mr. Councilman Agiri has a chance to answer.
Is it, Mike, did you want to read it one more time, just so she could hear?
Sure, I'll be happy to. Uh, given the often combative nature surrounding the Seminary Road Diet, the next big transportation study and project would be the transit lanes along Duke Street. What is your opinion of the installation of dedicated bicycle lanes on this major east west thoroughfare during either phase one or phase two of this project between Landmark and King Street Metro? Should the city acquire private property to achieve these transit goals?
Uh, so the answer is, it depends, right? Because we haven't done the study yet. Um, we can't make that decision until we have the information provided to us. Would I like to see bike lanes? Sure. Is it feasible? Don't know. If it's not feasible, then it's a nonstarter. It's not going to happen. Um, and I think the the other issue too, right, is that we're looking, a lot of the traffic where it gets bottled up is between Quaker and Telegraph, right? Unfortunately, um, we've gotten a lot more money to be able to study that as well because we really need to figure that out. Um, because to me, usually from Quaker going west, it's less of an issue. Um, and we're if we're going to be talking about bus rapid transit and potential uh dedicated lanes for bus rapid transit, I'd much rather see the feasibility for a dedicated lane for bus rapid transit as opposed to bikes, right? Because the bikers could put their their bikes on the buses and and go along with the bus. But um we, I would be in favor of protecting the service roads that are there uh existing currently.
Thanks. And and you know, as you may, we were, this is a, it's a two phase process of looking at and it's primarily with bus transit lanes. And there's been a lot of discussions on on how that fits into the complete streets and everything else. So um, that's going forward. That's kind of what we've been uh we're we're monitoring. Um, so Ms. Gaskins, uh, did you immediately read the questions again and or did you get it when I just read it from Councilman Agiri?
Um, I should be all set. So thank you for for letting me, letting me jump in. I appreciate it and I apologize for my my tardiness. It's been a back to back evening. Um, so what I would say is that, you know, the reality is we have lots of people to serve on our streets from those who take the bus to those who are cyclists, to pedestrians, to drivers. I live on the West End. I live in Cameron Station, so I experienced sitting on Duke Street and being stuck in traffic just like probably many people on this call. I think that as we plan for what's next for Duke Street, I think we have to start getting into the habit of thinking about the entire system. So I know Canick just mentioned what I would have said about, you know, the backup at Quaker Lane. I think there's also the backup further down at Telegraph. And so we have to start thinking about if we're going to make this street work better, how do we think of all of the different barriers that exist that continue to make it not work? Whether we're putting in bike lanes or we're putting in bus rapid tra- bus rapid transit. So I'm supportive of us looking at the studies. I think we need a lot more community engagement around this process to really think about the impacts. And I think that we need to do everything we can to try and maintain the service roads there. As I've been walking up and down the streets with neighbors, I know that's a huge concern. So I won't give you a definitive yes or no now, but know that I will be out continuing to do those walks, continuing to have the conversation, looking at the data and trying to make the most informed decision that we can to best serve all of us who are using that street.
All right. Thank you. Um, so the, Mr. Moran, you will answer this one first. We'll go back in in alphabetical order.
Sarah didn't get to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah. I do apologize.
What a collegiality we have here. That was amazing. Everybody's hands went up. Uh, if I could, uh, just address it briefly.
Sure, you have one minute.
Okay, um, you know, the the piece I would just add here is um we also need to consider, you know, environmental impacts as we are making these transit decisions. You know, the two greatest sources of our emissions in the city are existing buildings and transportation. So safety is a key issue. Accessibility of the marketplace is a key issue. But I think as we do these studies, we want to be conscious of how can we reduce those single occupancy vehicle miles driven? And in this situation, I think buses, you know, put more, get more people, are likely to get more people off the road and get them where they need to go and potentially free with our with our, you know, recent legislation. So um, I I agree with with a lot of the general, the thought here that the bike lane piece certainly actually needs study. But broadly speaking, trying to adapt Duke Street in such ways that reduces the amount of traffic because it means there are fewer single vehicle drivers. That's good both for traffic and for our quality of air air quality moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, the next question, um, we will start with Ms. Gaskins. Um, and we will go, you know, again, Gaskins, McPike, Moran, Bagley, Agiri. So I'll make sure I get it right. I don't want to forget anybody. Um, okay, you know, presently, the review team for stream restoration alternatives for Strawberry Run will include only city staff, the city EPC committee, and most probably the city contractors for Taylor and Star andbury runs. Will you support including a scientific representative chosen by Strawberry Run residents for the review team or having an objective third party conduct the review to assure its results are credible? Ms. G.
So, yes, I'm happy to chime in. Uh, so one of the reasons why I'm running and I've talked about on the campaign trail is I think that we have to have more opportunities for more voices to be at the table, shaping the decisions that impact our lives and impact each of us. And so I am in favor of exploring the ways that we can expand the current task force or commission to make sure that there's, you know, representative who brings different environmental backgrounds. I also think it's important to make sure that we have more resident voices from those directly abutting to Strawberry Run or the other stream restoration projects that we're looking at. In terms of supporting a third polit- party analysis, I definitely want to look at the, you know, cost implications. But I think it's important that we do whatever we can to get as many voices and as many perspectives to the table so that we can all feel confident in the process um and and are co creating the alternative that we'll put forward.
Thank you, um, Mr. McPike.
Yes, no, I uh agree with Aaliyah um on that, that we should make sure that we're providing the opportunities for as many voices as possible. And I would be very comfortable with having a scientific uh person added to the commission who is um coming from that, from a more localized perspective. I think that there are real questions about the results of the natural stream restoration that was done on part of Strawberry Run earlier and it's reasonable to uh take a skeptical eye to this to make sure that we're taking the right approach on these. Um, you know, a lot of this is driven by grants and um I would hope that in the future uh we don't have these debates after we have grants, that we're being more thoughtful and more sort of, you know, inclusive in terms of uh how we approach the pre uh solicitation of grants to make sure that our policy decisions are driving the grants we get. We don't get stuck in situations where the grants we have drive the policy decisions that we end up making. Um, and I think that having more voices in this process would be a useful thing.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Moran.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. You know, I think that this is something, part of this is a process improvement. Part of it is just ensuring that uh folks are part of the decision that understand the ramifications of the decisions that are being made. Something I didn't get to in our intro is that my business, I'm a small business owner. I've got a a team that focuses on stormwater management, issues, uh flooding and ecological restoration, um maximizing the biodiversity of folks' yards, large and small. And so when I look at this and when I walked Strawberry Run with Joe, it became crystal clear to me that there was a breakdown in terms of maintenance and quality control. I'd love to see us empowering our civic associations to understand what sort of maintenance requirements are uh are necessary after we make capital investments in our public lands. I think that that's core to that QC process. Um, and then also, we need to ensure that it's not just the EPC, but that we've got civic associations and citizen association uh members that are part of the decision making process and and.
Hey, thanks. Um, minutes goes by quickly. Uh, Ms. Bagley.
Thank you. Um, I do think extending and and broadening the group of people who are making decisions with regards to strawberry runs and honestly, all three stream restoration projects that have presently been paused for reevaluation is a good thing. Um, with regard to whether it's a scientific expert in a particular field from the neighborhood, I I think sometimes that the layman who has been present over the lifecycle of of an environment has just as much value. Um, I I know with Strawberry Run, there's a, there's a particular sort of dispute or a lack of clarity about when exactly a waterfall appeared and, you know, what impact did it have when? And that's where simply a resident who has been present abutting the property for ten years, whether they have the resident, the, you know, scientific training or not, you know, might be a valuable voice. Um, so I think, yes, I mean, expanding the universe of our participants, um, finding experts that everybody can sign off on. But also, I think with with many issues that involve funding and involve our local history and topography, there could be value in simply including somebody who can say, I was there then and and here's the photo I took.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Agiri, Mr. Agiri.
So uh overall, I'd say that the city has a very professional staff. Um, are they perfect? No. Do they make mistakes? Absolutely. Uh, the Environmental Policy Commission, the EPC, you know, is open to the public. Uh, that's how we got commentary as well is through the EPC as well as directly to council members. This is something where, again, right, we got input. Uh, we opened this decision back up and we basically stopped the projects that were going on except for for Lucky Run, uh which is continuing. So um, you know, I think that as a city, we provide a lot of space for public input and um that that space is available for any of these third parties to come forward and for residents to to voice their concerns. Um, if they don't feel that they're being heard by someone, then they need to contact council and we're all readily available. Uh, I've always admitted, I'm not great with answering emails, but if someone asks for a meeting, I always honor meetings.
Thank you. Um, next question. We will start with Mr. McPike. Um, many Alexandrians believe that they have no meaningful voice in city development or traffic related matters citing the Seminary Road process as an example. How specifically will you act to restore confidence in the city administrative process and assure that the voices of citizens are heard and actually taken into consideration by city staff?
I mean, yes, I think it's the role of an elected official is to uh listen to the public and um be an advocate for the for the public um when dealing with city staff and making sure that they're getting, that that people are being heard about the things that matter most to them and that they are um being understood about the issues that that matter most to them. Um, I also think that it's important to listen to a wide variety of voices. And as I said, I plan to hold regular town halls across the city to hear as many positions as I can, you know, because we do have a lot of controversial issues where public opinion is split pretty close to even on things like Seminary Road where you have, you know, very evenly split opinions across the city and even in this neighborhood. And it can be difficult when you have to make a binary choice to uh satisfy all sides on a question like that. But you need to make sure that people are listened to, treated respectfully and understood in the decision making process. That's, that's what we need to do in a democracy.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Moran, same question.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it. Governing is difficult. Making decisions are difficult. And you have to make them uh understanding that you're going to please some folks and you're going to upset others. Um, you know, it's it's core and critical that we take, you know, account the concerns uh and mitigate them to the extent, understanding that there may be sacrifices that go along with those. Now, with the Seminary Road decision. Now with the Seminary Road decision, I think that, uh, safety and the, the process, I spoke to failures before. You know, the fact is, is that the Trafficking Parking Board made a recommendation and then ultimately council, uh, considered in conjunction with that, a alternative that, uh, that did not include some of the safety improvements that otherwise were vetted through our board and commission process. Principally, when you go down there and you look at some of the pedestrian refuge centers in that middle lane, that third lane, which otherwise would be a throughway for emergency vehicles, you've got curves there. Um, I think that that's just one example of the type of safety, uh, improvements that may otherwise undermine the safety intent. We have to ensure that those types of decisions don't happen again, and I think we have to rectify them.
Thank you. Um, next is Mr. Aguirre?
So first off, um, you know, people's voices have to be heard and it needs to be done so respectfully with, without a doubt. You know, there's, I'm never going to contend that at all. I'm, I'm very big on people's voices being heard and the opportunity for people's voices to be heard. I, I suppose I, I take some issue with the framing of the question and I, I disagree with the framing of the question because this was a 12 to 18 month process. There was definitely outreach done. There were multiple forums that were done. There were lengthy hearings that we had. But again, this wasn't a matter of not hearing voices. It was a matter of disagreement on a situation and how things were going to be done. And so I think we need to make sure that we're separating those two out, right? There's not being heard and there's disagreement. So I, I want us to be able to get back to a place where we can be able to disagree, um, in a civil way.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Bagley?
Thank you. Um, so I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start in an odd place maybe. So working with Moms Demand Action, we have a motto and it's lose forward. And it's recognizing that oftentimes the advocacy work that we do on a particular issue doesn't win the day. And for years advocating in Richmond, we lost, you know, but we went and we, we spoke to people who were on both sides of the issue and we, we set our peace and we held rallies. I spoke before our council on various issues and, and we lost, but we saw it as losing forward because we were continuing to make our, our opinion known. We were continuing to build support for our opinion. And I think with this conversation tonight is evidence that this issue has been elevated and that though the outcome admittedly was not, uh, what a representative of the population wanted, they were heard and they are, we are continuing to talk about and evaluate how to handle this moving forward.
Thank you. Um, and last, Ms. Gaskins?
Um, so as a public health professional, one of the things I understand deeply is that the ability to make decisions and to have a role in decisions that shape your life impact mental health. I think the question asked, what are we going to do moving forward? And so a few ideas I have are as follows. The first is, you know, as a city, we put information on the website, but sometimes it can be difficult to navigate. And so I'd love to see us get into the point of having like three or four quick bullets about why were you taking on a process? What could be the potential impacts and what are the ways that you're going to have an opportunity to engage? Second, I think it's important that moving forward, we explore more of this hybrid model. We're seeing the ability to engage people online, so both online and in person. I think we also have to have feedback loops, you know, being heard and understanding how your information was taken into account, how it was incorporated into the decision is critical. And I think we also have to start creating sort of metrics for how we do engagement. The metric can't just be how many people showed up, but what are the different ways that people had the opportunity to engage? What are the different things that we're seeing about how their voice was actually incorporated into the decision-making? And I think that might help people see.
All right, thank you. Um, kind of keeping along with the same transportation, uh, theme. The first question, first respondent here is, um, Mr. Moran. Um, the main source congestion, uh, in the Duke Street corridor is a ramp, uh, from eastbound Duke to southbound Telegraph Road. What is your position on making that ramp two lanes or otherwise controlling or improving the flow in that intersection?
Yeah, you know, these are the types of improvements and investments that our federal partners can help with quite a bit. We have to study it. We have to understand it. We have to understand the ramifications and the timing. Also because any sort of project in that magnitude carries with it huge ramifications during construction and otherwise. So I, I think that making improvements, capital in, in investments that ultimately can provide and improve the flow of traffic helps. You know, there's been a lot of conversation and a lot of the investments that have been made are based upon less folks driving. The reality is, is that when EVs are here in a couple of years, uh, as they are in Europe right now, that's not going to be the case. A lot of folks are going to be driving and, uh, and this is a main throughway from the residential belly of our city. Uh, I'd love to see us maximize and prioritize quality of life issues such as this and understand the infrastructure investments, our investments for the long term and ensure that there's buy-in, stakeholder buy-in, not just stakeholder engagement, but stakeholder buy-in, understanding that folks get, uh, the trade-offs and the improvements and what's, uh, hopefully a positive outcome on the back end of projects like these.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Aguirre?
Did you say that one more time, Mike? Because I wasn't too clear on what exactly you guys were asking. You just talking about Telegraph or?
We're talking about the, the intersection, uh, between Duke and Telegraph. And, um, do you support making, uh, improvements to that?
Okay.
In, in action?
Yeah, no, a hundred percent. Um, a major, major issue, you know, I brought it up in one of the last questions, right? That whole stretch from Quaker to Telegraph, huge mess, have to figure it out. And specifically that intersection at Duke and, and Telegraph, um, yeah. We have found money today to dedicate to studying this to try and figure this out. So that this is definitely on our radar for sure and it's definitely something that we're trying to work on. I don't think there's anybody on council that does not see this intersection as a very important intersection in the city for traffic, for congestion, for quality, quality of life, for just about everything. So I, I honestly don't know what the solution is for it. But I, you know, that's why we have engineers or if we need to get another group to come in and study it, that we need to do that. But again, this is money that we're getting state funding for. And if we're going to undertake a large-scale project, hopefully we could get some federal funding as well.
Sure. Uh, thank you. Um, Ms. Bagley?
Thank you. So I think there's an opportunity here to sort of incorporate many of the things that we've already touched on and they range from civic engagement to, you know, how our city staff works. Um, I, I, I share the concern that this is clearly a problematic choke point in our, you know, our, our commuting system and our travel system through the city. I've also ended up in the wrong lane at the wrong time myself. So, um, I, I know everybody, you know, has experienced that at one time or another. So, um, I, I share the desire to, uh, study and solve it. But what I would add to that is, I, I think we could do better about helping our residents understand the timeframe that decisions like this take and that they can know, are we in the study phase? Are we in the proposal phase? And then if we do have well-funded, well-organized civic associations, citizen representatives, we know that these people are going to get an update that says phase two is a month away. It's going to be the RFP phase. So yes, we need to invest in it and we also need to communicate well and early about where we're at in the process.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Gaskins?
So I would agree, we absolutely need to improve the flow at this intersection, not just because it's an existing problem, but also as we talked about earlier, any changes we're going to make to Duke Street, they won't be successful if people are just going to be stuck in traffic because we haven't addressed the root cause of the problem. What I would say is my understanding is that one of the holdups has been that there's, you know, part of the roads that we own. There's also other parts that are state-owned. And so what I would be committed to doing is making sure that when we have the information from our residents, from the studies we're doing or any other part of this process, that we are advocating to our delegation in Richmond as well as our federal leaders to make sure that they understand what we need in this intersection, the types of resources and the types of support we need in order to get it done. And so having that partnership and building that collaboration so that we can best serve our residents is key to me.
Thank you. Um, Mr. McPike?
Yeah, I think you have a unanimous agreement here that there's definitely an issue along Duke Street. If you're trying to go from Quaker, uh, to Old Town, that there's a confusing intersection there and the little posts and everything, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a challenge and it backs up our traffic. And I would hope that we're able to take some of the infrastructure dollars that will be coming down in the Biden jobs bill, uh, work with our partners in the state government, use that money to try to look at this issue, see what we can do to address it and move as quickly as possible to create a solution. As Patrick said, we need to make sure that we are not, um, you know, creating a more of a problem while we're fixing the problem during the construction phase. But I think that we can approach this carefully, thoughtfully with a lot of public input, a lot of staff and federal and state expertise and, and improve the flow of traffic in that part of the city.
Ms. Moran, you, you hand up, did you have?
Quickly, you know, we have to understand too that the overpass, uh, and what we're asking that intersection to do is a lot more than what it's equipped to do. Uh, a long ago, there was conversations about, uh, an additional connection over the railroad lines at Claremont, at Wheeler, uh, and the connecting to Duke. I think some, it's time that we reevaluate some of those, uh, in conjunction with this.
Thanks. Um, obviously, you know, trafficking and transportation is a big issue facing, you know, the, and a big concern within the neighborhood. There's also a lot of discussions, the same touch points I'm sure you hear throughout the, the city. Next question refers to one of them, um, is what is your position on placing affordable housing on school property? Do you support an ordinance, a formal policy statement that, uh, bars co-locating housing, specifically housing on ACPS grounds? First question, uh, that starts with you, Councilman, um, Aguirre?
So I absolutely do not support an ordinance like that. Um, that would be irresponsible of us to do. Uh, when we're talking about this, you know, and looking at co-location, we have to look at everything that's on the table, right? I, I guess I'm frustrated with, with how this has come through, right? If you want to talk about space for the kids, yeah, absolutely. I, I totally agree with that. And, you know, if there isn't space to do any other type of co-location, whether it's a rec center, a pool, early ed space or space for, uh, you know, a teen wellness center, something like that, then, you know, that, that's one thing. But if, if it's an argument around safety, then, then I, I fundamentally reject that argument because when you look at the schools that we have today in Alexandria, you literally have schools that are across the street from million-dollar homes and from public housing. If you don't believe me, uh, come take a trip with me. I'll, I'll take you around the different schools and show you.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Bagley?
Thank you. So we, we need every tool we can get for, you know, to, to create more housing units in Alexandria and ideally affordable ones, but, you know, co-location is not the first place that, that I would look, you know, to solve that problem. Have, we, we have a shortage of capacity for, for schools themselves and for classrooms and recreational spaces and pools and all those issues. So, uh, that, that's not the, how I, you know, first on my list and, and, but having said that, you know, I share Councilman Aguirre's position that to foreclose it ever and always in any circumstances, I, I is, seems too far a step. And, and I say that because both the current placement of schools and also in, in, you think of like a boarding school environment, there, there's plenty of situations where teachers and staff, you know, live amongst their students. So I, while it's not what I, what I'm advocating for and while I think we have many other more pressing ways to use our city-owned spaces, I would not, uh, push for a permanent bar to consider it in a, uh, architectural consideration.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Gaskins?
Yep. Um, so I think most people know that I'm a new mama. My son just turned one. And so oftentimes when I think about these issues, I am centering him as part of it because I am excited to one day send him to ACPS. I have not supported co-location of housing on schools because of, you know, I think Sarah just mentioned it, the capacity issues we have. The reality is we don't have enough educational spaces, but also I'd like to see us start planning and designing for schools of the future. You know, we don't have enough performing arts spaces. We don't have maker spaces or areas for kids to come in and tinker and learn. We have other opportunities to partner with our unions and our trades to expand career and technical education opportunities. And so I think if we're thinking about the limited amount of land that we have for our schools, we have to be thinking about not just your traditional school building, but really thinking about what are the things we need to expose our children to throughout the school day so that they're career and college ready. I think in terms of an ordinance of, um, you know, barring any opportunity for us to think about co-location, I think boarding schools is a particular area I'd want to really think about. But I, um, at the end of the day, I've not been supportive of this policy.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. McPike?
Yeah, when it comes to schools, the city council has two responsibilities. We need to fund the school's budget to make sure our teachers and educators have the resources they need to help our students succeed. And we need to make sure that our schools have enough space to end classroom overcrowding. And so while I favor considering co-location of things like pools and rec centers that students can also make use of in school properties, I do not support co-locating housing on school grounds because of the just limited space that we have. I think that we can make better use of the space in ways that truly benefit the educational purposes of our school properties. Regarding an ordinance though, right now you have a majority of the school board that does not support co-location. You have a majority of the candidates running for city council who do not support co-locating housing on schools. The democratic process is putting forward candidates to take that position. And I don't think we should necessarily imprint permanently our opinions on the future forever by passing an ordinance. People who have, make different choices in future elections should have the right to make those choices.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Moran, last question?
Look, Alexandria average starting pay for teachers is $56,000. That's not enough to live in our city. And, uh, I don't know about you guys, but I grew up and had teachers that we'd run into on the weekends, uh, riding our bike. That's part of what makes a vibrant community. It's part of the accountability and the investment of our educators in our young people. In terms of co-location, you know, and, and it's the, the nature of this conversation is unfortunately, uh, I feel like gotten very toxic. But I would a hundred percent be supportive of housing opportunities for teachers on our school grounds, creating ecosystems, ensuring that they're separate, ensuring that they're, uh, you know, with, with separate access and otherwise and that controls are taken in place. But for a young educator who's coming in, trying to live in an incredibly expensive place, uh, getting their start, I think that there are the excellent opportunities for that. I don't think we ought to be looking at housing for any other, uh, types of scenarios to meet our housing goals. I, I think that we can find solutions alternatively for that, but for teachers, yes.
All right, thank you. Um, next question. Would you support limiting individuals to participation in no more than one city commission or ad hoc committee so that more residents would have the opportunity to help steer the city? For example, the current chair of the Transportation Commission is also the vice chair of the Planning Commission and a member of the Alexandria Mobility Advisory Committee. Uh, first, uh, response is for Ms. Bagley.
Thank you. Um, this is a great question too, just because, um, so many questions tonight about civic engagement, you know, ways to, ways to get involved. So, um, I think we do need to broaden our participation in these boards and commissions. I think to, to the extent that there is overlap, it's evidence that we are not reaching and inviting a broad enough, you know, part of our community to participate. When I first moved here, as I mentioned, I quickly got involved in various organizations and, and I wasn't aware of all these opportunities, um, until, uh, you know, I, somebody pointed me to the website and I started scanning them. So in terms of, uh, limiting, uh, how many you can be on, uh, I'm aware that there's a liaison process and I'm aware that there is also some benefit in some crossover. Having said that, if we can put those roles outside of the limited number of actual designated positions, then I, you know, I believe we should have that crossover, that cross-communication between organizations. But yes, we should, we should set up these panels and commissions in such a way that we broaden participation and not shrink it.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Gaskins?
Yes. So I too would like to see us broaden our participation on our boards and commission. I think that includes bringing more and diverse voices to the table. I think one way to get there is even thinking about, do we have the right number of people on each of those commissions? So that's something I'd like to study and understand. In terms of having people serve on kind of different commissions at one time, I do think there is benefit to the liaison role. And that is because it gives us an opportunity to make sure that we're sharing information across those commissions. So one example, when I sat on the Transportation Commission, I was also the chair of the mobility plan because it was an opportunity for me to make sure that everything we were doing in the plan was linked to what's happening in those transportation discussions. Because if not, then we're creating separate systems, we're planning in silos and I think we create a system that doesn't actually work for the people who it's designed to use. I'd also like I'd also like us to get into the habit of, yes, our boards and commissions play a very critical role and that's important. But everyone is never going to have enough time to be on all of these boards and commissions. And there's so many other voices that we have to bring to the table. And so finding ways that we're creating feedback loops or other ways of getting information so that people still feel like they have an opportunity to make decisions, even if they can't serve on those commissions is important to me.
Thank you so much. Um. Mr. McPike.
So first of all, I want to say to anyone out there watching tonight or online who was a member of one of our boards and commissions, thank you for giving so much of your time to helping our city become a better place. These are volunteer positions that can consume a great amount of time, particularly some of the more involved ones that wants to deal with transportation, the budget, um, planning, and it's always important to have a multitude of diverse voices on these commissions. And I do think we need to look at, make sure we have as broad of a base of people participating as possible. I think that we need to be considered, taking time to consider a lot of questions about our boards and commissions, like making sure that we have labor representatives on any commissioner committee that deals with issues regarding the workforce or worker rights or, you know, just job creation in the city. And I do think, as others have said, that the liaison roles between, say, the budget fiscal affairs advisory committee and the school board's budget committee, or some of the other ones between the human services depart, uh, commissions are very important. I'd want to keep those, but I would be open to limiting the number of non-leison spots that individuals can hold.
Thank you. Um. Mr. Moran.
Yeah, I appreciate the question and I think that there's a number of things that we need to improve as part of this process. For the first three years of participating on the citizen core council, the CCC, it was clear that the role and responsibility of our boarding commission was largely perfunctory. We would provide a budgetary letter at the end of the year to kind of recommend certain actions. But otherwise, it was a duty of the city staff to basically report to us. It felt good, it felt nice, and it was inclusive, but I think we need to be far more direct in terms of, uh, deliverables coming from our boards and commissions and power them. And I'd like to see us expand our membership as well. I'd like to also see the boards and commissions play a role in the evaluation criteria for issuing recommendations. Now, you know, the CCC is now doing the resilient ALX charter, a very constructive effort that's ultimately going to inform our investment criteria. So, uh, with strong leadership, we can get great things done, but we need to ensure that we've got as many folks participating. And I'd like to see us maintain our virtual aspect.
Thanks. And lastly, um, Mr. Geary.
I think one of the things that we have to take into consideration is the, um, quantity versus quality, right? We have, um, a little over 70 boards and commissions and you throw in the advisory groups and we have even more, right? For a city of our size, that's pretty unheard of. So we, we have a whole lot of, of boards and commissions and opportunities for people to get involved. I would not be for, maybe I'm, I'm, I don't want to mischaracterize what some of the other candidates are saying by broaden or enlarging. So I wouldn't be for that. However, I would be for diversifying, um, the actual seats that we have. And part of what, uh, I've been doing on the subcommittee that Councilman Chapman and I, and I are part of reviewing our boards and commissions is, do these boards and commissions have the appropriate types of seats? So I think that's how we get the diversity to make these, uh, boards and commissions more efficient and able to give us, um, improved feedback, which again, I think it is important, uh, that we improve that dialogue between the boards and commissions and councils. Then the last thing I'll, I'll mention is that I think there has to be that understanding that we can't work in silos, and this is the point of having liaisons. And while one person might be on one commission, it's not necessarily that.
Thanks, um, so much. Uh, you know, I think we had a, a good point and I think you get your point across. As we head towards the, you have about 15 more minutes left, so we'll, we'll go through this last couple of questions. And the next question, we will start with, um, Ms. Gaskins. Is do you support returning to a ward system whereby the city will be divided in equally sized areas? Each would elect a resident of that ward to the council, perhaps with one or two at-large council members? Please explain.
So as I've been out talking to people and hearing their concerns, I think the ward system has come up because people are frustrated and they feel like they don't have a point person or someone to turn to. At the same time, I've spent a lot of time working in cities from across this country, from those, you know, right across the river in DC to Cleveland and other places that have wards or districts. And I think we don't have to go far to see even places that have had representatives like Ward seven and eight. They're having worse outcomes than their neighbors in wards two and three. And so I think we really have to be thinking of whatever system we create, and I'm open to studying it. What are the equity implications? What are the implications on how we actually ensure that people are going to get their voices heard? I think we also have to think about as a city, in some ways, at large has served us. You know, I look at my neighbors in Cameron Station, they would not have approved a stormwater fee increase when they don't see flooding as a big, is, they don't feel the impacts of flooding as big as our neighbors in Delray and Old Town. And so being at large in some ways served us to be able to get the resources that we need in order to address those issues. So I'm open to having the conversation and learning more about the history and the things maybe I'm not aware of. But I think we really have to think about, do we just need better politicians? Or what's the way that we can actually ensure people's voices are going to be?
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. McPike.
Yes, so I do not support returning to any sort of ward system in the city of Alexandria. I think that we can see in places like DC that ward systems often foster competition and disagreement between neighborhoods. When I think what this year has shown is that Alexandria, when we rally together and we put ourselves, uh, forward to address taking on the pandemic, fighting to fix our flooding problems in Rosemont, Delray and parts of Old Town, that we can really muster, uh, a great deal of unity and purpose. And I think that our at-large city elections where every member of council works for you, not just the person who happens to be geographically closest to you helps foster that. And so as I've said a couple of times, if I'm elected to council, I'm going to be all over the city, soliciting opinions to make sure that I'm representing the voices and thoughts of everyone in this city. We're 15.3 square miles. There's a lot of different kinds of Alexandria, in Alexandria, but we're all one city. And I think at-large elections reflect that reality.
Right. Thank you. Um. Let's see, so, um, Mr. Moran.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the question, Mike. I'm afraid that we would be trading one host of problems for another. I think that as it is right now, uh, we've got, uh, a common sentiment that there's an accountability to the entire city. I think that there are improvements that we can make that don't require a reorganization that would potentially, uh, exclude certain aspects of the city, such as opening up a, uh, a government center on the, at the Mark Center. You know, we're, we're already, uh, getting additional health facilities, uh, with, uh, with that first floor and with the, some of the rental space there. I'd love to see us host, uh, city council meetings there as well. Uh, on an alternating basis, I think that that'll improve accountability, accessibility and participation. I, you know, I, I would, uh, be inclined to believe that, uh, that we, no, the genesis of our move away from words, uh, forgive me, I'm skipping words here, but, uh, yeah, it was, it was a, a bad decision early on to do it. It excluded people, but now our outcome is, I think, generally been positive and we can find it back forward.
All right. Uh, Mr. Geary.
Uh, so, you know, I actually proposed having a roving, uh, city hall and bringing city hall to the people back in 2018. We're actually on the verge of doing it in 2020, but of course pandemic hit and we had to stop. Um, I'm hopeful that once we get back to a new normal, that we'll be able to take this back up again and actually have a quarterly city hall meeting in a different part of the city each quarter, uh, so that we could bring government to the people more so. But more, more to the point, uh, I do not support wards. I don't see how it would have happened in an equitable way here in the city. You, you would have groups that just would not be represented at all. And, um, I, this, by being at large, it forces candidates and council members to go to every part of the city and to have a broader understanding of all of our community, right? By doing wards, you get limited to just one community and to one point of view. You need to be able to represent everyone in the city. And for that reason, I want to keep it as at-large.
Thank you. Um, and lastly, Ms. Bagley.
Okay, so raise your hand if you have done a drain ALX tour with, uh, Katie Wainick. Has anybody on here done that? So if any one of us wasn't in her ward, we might not have done that. But because all of us have to be concerned with, you know, how things are impacting, and that was just the freshest thing that I could think of. But it's a good example of why having to be responsive to all elements of the city. And I, I took a wild swing there, but I, I did, I did okay. That, um, you know, most of us, I think, have, have gone out there and walked that, that path with her. And so I think that that's a, a nice representative example of what a citizen advocate can do and expect from all members of their council who are responsible to all of them. I think looking at our current council, we don't appear to have over-representation of any one specific area in the city. If in the future, after a series of decades, we did, we talk about it, but for now I agree generally with the other candidates. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Um. Okay, next question. And, um, we'll start with, uh, Gaskins on this one. Would you support a requirement that the city staff obtain community support before applying for any state or federal grant that impacts transportation, infrastructure or environment?
So I think in some way.
Let me make sure, you know, if you understood the question.
Yeah, so I think the question is, would we need to obtain community support before we go after any grants? It's particularly.
Community engagement, you know, kind of issue.
Yeah. So I think we do, but I think this is an area where we have the opportunity to improve. And so let me give you an example. Sitting on the transportation commission, I know that whenever the city was getting ready to apply for different, you know, grants, one thing they would do at our commission meetings is they'd often give a PowerPoint or a presentation on what's the grant? What's the potential benefit? Why do we need it? How does it connect to other projects? I think this is an opportunity where it's recognizing, yes, the transportation commission, and this is a very pointed example, has a role in that, but at the same time, they're not the only members of the community that's going to be impacted by that project. And so how do we ensure that there's maybe some community engagement or even publicizing of that meeting in a more, um, more intentional outreach way to make sure that, um, additional perspectives are considered and brought in as part of that discussion, so that when we're making recommendations to council about applying for those grants, it has been more inclusive process at the beginning, but then also sets the groundwork for us to do that throughout the process moving forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. McPike.
Yeah, I agree, uh, with Leah. We can probably take the processes that we have now to solicit input on grants and increase their visibility, increase the amount of outreach we do around them to make sure that the, the public is better informed of their opportunities to weigh in, that, um, we're listening, uh, to representatives of the different communities that are impacted by the, the question posed by the grant. I also think that we could, uh, adjust how we handle the grants in the council to allow for more public input and comment before voting on grant acceptances, um, or applications, uh, at the council level. Ultimately, uh, we solicit input from the public through a variety of mechanisms, our boards, our commissions, public comment at councils. And, uh, we've elected through our democratic process, uh, leaders to make the decisions for us. And, uh, we need to make sure that those leaders are doing everything they can to solicit input from the public about as wide a range of issues, including grants, as possible before making decisions. And then that they make sure that those decisions reflect the, uh, the informed input that they receive.
Sure, thank you. Um. Mr. Moran.
Yeah. So by the city staff measurement, they are getting input and that's the small area plans. We have to ensure that that process though, uh, it's that, once again, it's that stakeholder engagement versus stakeholder buy-in. We have to ensure that the ramifications and the impacts on our neighborhoods are heard. I think we also have to ensure that there's a continually iterative process in which we can update it. City staff doesn't want to apply for a grant that, that city's going to be against or the residents are going to be against. But they do want to do everything in their power to ultimately achieve the goals that there have been mutually agreed upon, to which everybody signed their name. And, uh, and, uh, supposedly a representative body of, uh, the constituency has, uh, agreed to and supported. So I think we have to ensure, and I think this is part of the accountability and deliverables that I alluded to earlier of our civic associations, ensure that there's a continual conversation about our small area plans, that they're reflective of the goals and the intentions and the unique character of each of our neighborhoods, uh, so that city staff can work on behalf as opposed to finding ourselves in a situation where it's that cascade of momentum that ultimately is achieving goals that the residents don't want.
Sure. All right, thank you. Um, Councilman Geary.
I absolutely support, you know, public input for any of our grants that we're looking to, to move forward. I know it's very difficult to keep up with everything that's going on with the city. There's so many meetings. You know, usually when these items get docketed, they get docketed at the beginning of, of our docket. Anyone is able to look at them and also come to, you know, provide public input or send, uh, public input through the 311 system. I'll do a quick plug for our Alex 311. So that, uh, excuse me, for e-alerts, for e-alerts, because you can go to the website, uh, do a search for e-alerts. You can sign up for whatever issue you're interested in and you'll be sure to be getting alerts specifically on those issues so that you can keep a close eye on them. Um, and then if you want to participate and come give your opinion, you can do so. So I think that's pretty important. Um, and then we have, of course, staff that's looking into, to grants as well. And that's why a lot of times it gets put onto the consent calendar, but then we always have more time to discuss it. And if we need to parse through it more, then we parse through it more.
All right, thank you. And, uh, last thing, Ms. Bagley.
Thank you. So I think this represents one area where we all talk about what are things we don't want to go back to normal, you know, pre-pandemic. I think this kind of discussion is a good example of something where we can benefit from what we've learned in the pandemic. I have, while we were in this debate, I got my daily ping, or you can't see it, but I got my daily ping from the city of Alexandria with everything related to today's COVID news. I, I wasn't getting that kind of information a year ago, daily from, from my city government. I also, as I walk my dog every day, I can't tell you how many different signs I see and how many different languages reminded me to be six feet apart and to do my part. So I think there's a lot we've learned about new and effective and broader ways to communicate. And maybe we should carry those through after the pandemic. You know, if we can, um, micro down that texting system where you sign up based on your small area plan. And whenever a new grant is pursued or a new development is raised, you can get text alerts for your small area plan. There are tools that we've created that should survive.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, in order to keep this on time, that was actually our last question. We're going to end exactly at 8:30, um, because we like to be, uh, efficient and don't waste anybody's time. But I really appreciate, um, all of your great answers and thoughtful, uh, responses. It's been absolute pleasure to be a moderator for this evening. And I thank you all and all the residents for, um, for joining us. And if you have any issues facing our city, uh, hearing your opinion and help us all be better informed voters. Jeannie, um, over to you to close this out. Uh, thanks everyone for, uh, joining us.
I also want to thank all of the candidates for sharing their time with us this evening. The residents of Seminary Ridge greatly appreciate your willingness to be here with us and to share your reasons for running for city council. Also, thank you to everyone in Seminary Ridge who joined us this evening to listen to the candidates. I think we've learned a lot about their positions and issues affecting our community. Our second forum with the next five candidates for city council will be this Thursday evening, May 20. It will begin at 7:15 instead of 7 o'clock, so mark your calendars and join us for form number two. Finally, a special thank you to Mike Souza for being our moderator this evening and to Richie Widlinger for being our timekeeper. Again, remember the Democrat primary is on Tuesday, June 8th, and it is open to all registered voters in Alexandria. Remember to mark your calendars and to vote. Finally, a special thank you and best wishes to all of the candidates this evening. We appreciate your being with us. Good night, and I hope to see all of you on Thursday evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night all. Thank you.